Commence this meeting. Good evening and welcome, board members, participants, and interested parties to the May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board. The board is now in session on a Zoom platform. We are calling the meeting to order at six thirty-one. I'm Amy Glassmeyer. I am the current Chair of the Cohasset Planning Board, and I'll be running tonight's meeting as we implement Massachusetts Chapter forty A and Cohasset zoning bylaw. Present this evening, on behalf of the Planning Board, are our Towns, Cassandra Thayer, and is Carolyn here tonight?
Carolyn called me and let me know that she got stuck in Boston, so she's not going to be attending.
All right, so we will not have Town Council tonight. Her name is Carolyn Murray. I will now take a roll call of the board members. Members, I will call your name, and you will please respond by repeating your name and saying present. First person, Clark Brewer.
Here.
Amy Glassmeyer here, Kevin Hine.
Kevin Hine here.
Deidra Hobson.
Deidra Hobson here.
Thank you, and Birgit Schmidt-Weser.
And Birgit Schmidt-Weser here.
Thank you. Our Associate Board, Birgit Schmidt, is a full participant in the hearing, though they do not have a vote, unless we have someone, unless we are short of an individual for covering the business today.
We still, we are, we are missing a regular member still, so Birgit could participate in any of the votes if you.
Were to give her this permission to be a full participant for this meeting, which I will, so thank you, Clark. I'm going to keep going. Meeting process procedures. Let's begin with a few directions to help with the meeting's progression. First, if anyone in the audience has questions for the board, please put them in the Q and A section at the bottom of the screen on the Zoom, or use the raised hand function, and Cassandra Thayer, our planner, will let you into the meeting to speak. If you want to start by stating your name and address, we need that first, and then please limit your discussion to three minutes. If you wish to ask additional questions, you are required to direct your comments and questions to me, so I can facilitate answers for, to you, to your comments and questions, pointing you either into the right direction of someone, or just simply to maintain the flow of our work. You will not be speaking directly to the Planning Board member, though. I will mediate the meeting's conversation. Tonight, we have a quorum of four elected members, and with Birgit, we have five members, including our associate. We'll be taking all the votes by roll call, with each member answering yea, nay, or abstain. All right, so we have two items of business tonight, and some administrative matters at the end of the meeting. So our two items tonight, we have, our first item is the request for an A and R approval, which I'll explain in a minute, and the second item of our meeting is the opening of a public hearing on a site plan review of the soon-somed Cohasset new police and administrative building. So we'll get to that. Let's see, so let's open, oh, and a few things about the A and R. The A and R is requested by David Bigley and Alex P. White. The approval not required under subdivision control law. Subject property is twenty-five James Lane. David Bigley and Alex P. White are petitioning to conduct this change located in Residence B District. The assessor's map parcel is IV Block Thirty-nine, Lot eleven. The A and R plan does not require approval under the subdivision control law, because the division shown on the A and R plan would merely create a parcel to be combined with the adjacent property to be conveyed. So are the individuals who are requesting the A and R here and present?
Present, Alix White.
Great.
And David Bigley.
Thank you. So would you like to, Cassandra, can you put up the map so that everybody can see it, and so that the Mr. Bigley and Ms. White can have a document to look at?
Yes, it will just take me a moment to pull it out of the files.
Okay. It always helps, in this instance, for an A and R, to be able to actually look at what's going on, and that allows us to identify particulars that we're responsible for in enabling you to undertake an A and R. But while Cassandra's doing what she's doing, I'm going to say, oh, all right. Now, is that visually legible for you?
Yes.
And we have the original here.
Okay, so could you talk us through what you're wanting to achieve?
Yes. We are simply conveying parcel A, that small parcel. It's over a ledge at the back of our property, and there's an oak tree in it that we are finding difficult to maintain. The Shorts, we're going to sell it to the Shorts, our neighbors on Pleasant Street. So we're just tidying up the lot, making our lot a rectangle, and they will have that little jog with the oak tree and the ledge.
All right. You know, sometimes trees are in the way. It's better to leave the tree and not cut it down. So that's, you're doing something very good for the environment. Mr. Bigley, do you have any comments you want to make?
No, other than this was just this little chunk of land that was sort of drawn on a map, and it makes more sense that the Shorts have plans for it, more, they have more plans for it than we do. So, you know, we're delighted to, you know, separate it. John Short was supposed to be on here this evening, but I think he didn't get the link that I sent to him. But it's a, it's virtually a done deal. I mean, we have talked to them, and they're totally in agreement, and they would make good use of it, better use of it than we would, so.
All right. So typically, the A and R does not require approval under the subdivision control law, because the division shown on yours, as an example, would merely create a parcel to be combined with the adjacent property to be conveyed. So let me ask Planning Board members if they have any comments about this transaction.
No, this appears to be a very simple A and R, and the lot that the Bigley owns that they're reducing in size still conforms to the minimum eighteen thousand square feet required in Residence A.
They're listed as being in Residence B.
I'm sorry, it's Residence?
B.
Residence B.
At least, that's what I came up with, and it's on their doc.
All right, then, I'll take that comment, comment back, but it, if that's the case, it was previously a non-conforming lot, if it's Residence B, and would remain non-conforming by virtue of its lot size.
All right. Would you elaborate on that, Clark, for everyone? When it's non-conform, go ahead.
No, I, I mean, I. Not hearing. I'm, I mean, I'm looking at the, at the the zoning map, and it's such a small scale, I can't quite tell what's in Residence A or B. But it frankly doesn't matter, it's not a relevant point. It doesn't make the existing lot, doesn't change anything.
All right, thank you. Would you comment on what, if anything, Mr. Bigley and Ms. White need to do further? Should we approve the A and R?
Well, well, what we usually do is we vote to agree to endorse an A and R, we don't really approve it. It's approval not required, that's what A and R stands for. So we endorse the plan, that's all we do.
All right.
We vote to endorse the plan, and then we show up at the Planning Board office and sign it, if we vote to endorse.
Great, thank you very much. So with that, can I get a motion to have the members of the Planning Board endorse the transfer of the property associated with the A and R plan that was submitted to us by Mr. Bigley and Ms. White, who live at twenty-five James Lane?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Thank you.
All right, roll call vote.
Clark Brewer, was it, was it yea or nay? Did you say yea instead of aye? Usually, we say aye.
Okay, we can do, we can change that, I'll change that in my notes.
Because aye sounds a little different than nay. Yea and nay sound more similar.
All right.
Or we could say yes, how about yes?
No, we can't say yes, we can't say yes. So let's continue the group, I guess I'm the next, Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Hine, aye.
Deidra Hobson, aye.
And Birgit Schmidt-Weser, aye.
All right, thank you. All right, so that takes care of our first bit of business, so let's proceed to our second. May your, may your yard drain well, right? That's always the problem around here. The second item of business is the opening of a public hearing, and can I motion to open the public hearing?
The motion to open the public hearing on one thirty-five King Street.
Thank you. All right. So the second project that we're looking at is is the renovation of the future home of the Cohasset facets of its municipal services on one thirty-five King Street. And so the public hearing notice is pursuant to MGL Chapter forty A and three hundred dash twelve dot seven of the Cohasset zoning bylaw for an application for a site plan review filed by the town of Cohasset. The subject property is one thirty-five King Street. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the Town Clerk's Office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty to four thirty P. M., and Friday, eight A. M. to twelve P. M. Electron versions of the application material can be obtained visiting the HTTPS Cohasset M. A. or forward slash five twenty-four, forward slash active P. V. application. So that's on the web for people who wish to review the materials. Any person interesting or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Now, one of the things about this case is that it is a public project, and we're actually primarily used to working with individual homeowner or landowner projects like this. So I'm floating a little bit here, so I'm going to read a few things that can help us think about what our job is regarding a site plan review. This is going to be the description of what they're doing in general, that's all that I have, and then I'm going to make some comments about the regulation and the language in the regulation associated with a site plan review, so that everybody is clear about exactly what we do when we are involved with a site plan review. So the work will be a renovation of an addition to a two-story fourteen thousand square foot building to create a twenty-four thousand square foot police headquarters and fire department substation. The police headquarters will house administrative offices, emergency operations center, departmental and community meeting rooms, and department locker rooms. In addition to the north of the existing building will house police detention areas, the Sallyport, and two vehicle bays. In addition to the south of the existing building will house the fire department substation with an apparatus bay for two fire apparatus and living quarters for two firefighters, as well as new building utilities. Site work will consist of regrading the site to accommodate the new work, relocation of existing utility services and connections to the building, a new transformer, addition of an emergency generator, added parking behind the building on the upper slope on the site, and new landscaping. The plan is attached to the entire document that is located at town. An application to the Cohasset zoning Board of Appeals has been made seeking sideline offset relief for the proposed building. Additional filings with that board will be required for a special permit to work with the Water Resource District and any other items that may require specialized zoning relief. So that's pretty scarce in the way of information about the project, but we can begin to think about it, and I'd like you all to think about it as I read a few things further. As a reminder to both the board members and of the public, when reviewing applications for a site plan review under Section three hundred dash twelve dot seven of the zoning bylaw, the board, the boards shall consider the following factors in its review of the project: adequacy of provisions for water drainage, sanitary waste disposal, including sound site buffers, storage and disposal of refuse and snow, screening of objectionable features such as dumpsters or storage areas from adjacent streets, and the protection of natural resources. Convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site is important, and we will review that, including parking and loading areas and the safety of curb cuts related to existing traffic conditions on adjacent streets. As this is one thirty-five Chief Justice Highway, we've just been at another site that very close to this one, and we're going to end up with a conversation, much like we did probably previously. And finally, compliance with all other applicable requirements of the zoning bylaw. The Planning Board may disapprove a site plan only if the board finds that the site review application is not complete in accordance with the site plan review regulations, or the proposed use and development of the site does not comply with the application use and development requirements of the zoning bylaw, or no reasonable conditions can be devised to ensure public health, safety, and other safety-related issues, including welfare by eliminating or reducing any significant detrimental impact that would result from development of the site as proposed. So I now ask if there is a member of the team that's here to talk to us about the project, because this is going to be multiple evening discussions, we want to get an overview of what the proposal is, because there still is more information that will no doubt come to us. And so I see Mr. Murray, and let's see, I don't think I have the, what's the full name of your organization?
My company is called Places Associates.
Okay, thank you, it gets cut off in the Zoom. So, Mr. William Murray, Places Associates, could you introduce and say a little bit about your history, what you do, who you are?
Sure, let me also introduce, with her hand up as well, Paula Claridge, who is the project architect. My firm is a subconsultant to her firm, which is HKT Architects, and they've designed the building. We'll jointly be presenting the project, I'll take the majority of the presentation, and I'll ask Paula to correct me when I'm wrong, because it occasionally happens. But my name is William Murray, I'm a registered landscape architect, although I'm not the landscape architect on this project. My, I'm a principal of my firm, and I've been doing public safety projects as a specialty in Massachusetts over the last thirty years. This will be my, something like my fifty-fifth public safety facility that I've done in Massachusetts over the last years, and it's an unusual type of structure, and it's an unusual type of use. Usually, there's only one or two fire stations in a town, and usually only one police station in a town. And they are not like a retail facility, they're not like any other residential development. They have unique characteristics and requirements, which we have designed, both the site and the architect has designed the building to meet. So Paula, would you like to introduce yourself just briefly, and then we'll get into the presentation?
Sure. Good evening, everybody, my name is Paula Claridge, I'm the project manager for the renovation project, I'm with HKT Architects. Our firm does a lot of municipal projects throughout the state and in New England, public safety buildings, police and fire stations separately, as well as town halls and things like that. And we've been working with the building committee to design this particular project, and I've had a lot of feedback from them in as far as the design of it goes. The site has been a challenge, but I think that the design that we've come up with for this has not only addressed the client's needs, but also worked very sensitively with the site as well. So we hope you find that as well.
So.
All right, well, let's continue then, and thank you, and I apologize, by the way, that I didn't know there was going to be two people tonight.
Well, the fire chief is also here, so he's in the background. If I have your permission, Madam Chair, may I just do a brief PowerPoint presentation?
That would be fine. Cassandra, can, does Cassandra have your slide?
No, but I.
Are you going to run your own?
Share screen.
Share your screen.
So can people see this screen?
Yep.
Okay, great. So again, this is the Cohasset Public Safety Project. Paula and I are listed on the page there. Come on, you little thing. Let me get my screen up here, there we go. This is an exterior rendering of the proposed facility. You can see this kind of light tan area that will be the fire station part of the project. It's a two-bay fire substation with housing on the left-hand side. This portion of the building is pretty much the existing building that exists today, with an addition on the northerly side, which are three separate bays, to house unique aspects of the police station. So we have a rendering and an aerial view to give you a little bit more perspective. This would be, the lower view is the front of the building, looking down from an aerial view. You can see the varying roof lines. On, again, lower left, you'll see that this is the house portion of the fire department that goes around on the first level. Two apparatus bays, one, and I'll let Paula address that if there's a question. The meat potatoes part of the police station is here, with the principal entry being where the existing main entry to the building is today, and the garage entry over to the far right or northerly side. And then we have a driveway that goes from the front of the building on the northerly side up to a parking lot behind, which is the upper view. So again, the northerly side is the side closest to us on the upper view, the existing police station, or the existing building being converted, and then the addition on the southerly side. And this, this portion of the southerly side is mostly all mechanical spaces and use spaces, it's not really occupied space. Paula, do you want to go into some of the architectures briefly?
Yeah, just a brief summary about the massing of the building. The new additions to the north and south were created based on the existing roof lines of the building in the center there, that we're not altering the exterior of at all, except to replace the windows and the roof. So it was meant to try to tie it all in, so once it's completed, it looks pretty cohesive. I think Bill has done a pretty good job walking through what the plans are for the additions. The fire department, or the, yes, the substation is going to house, at the moment, an engine and an ambulance. We've got dorms towards the back of the building, and then the front of the building is going to have the day room and a small triage report writing room. You can see those there on the left-hand side. At the back of the apparatus bay is all the decontamination areas, so when the firefighters come back from a call, they can decontaminate their equipment and themselves and their gear. So we've got the gear decon, the equipment decon, and then the shower for personnel, and then their gear storage area there, and then everything off to the left of that main dividing wall is the living area. And then in the main portion on the first floor of the existing building, we have, we're reusing the main entry, created a lobby space there, and then everything off of that is secure and backup house for the police department. So we have a training and emergency operations center right off the lobby. And then adjacent to that is training room for the police department. For the street side are offices for the police chief, a conference room, and the executive officer, as well as a reception area and the admin assistant. And to the north side, the addition we're doing there is for the detention area and Sallyport, so the vehicles will come into the Sallyport with any guests for the detention area, and will be escorted back into detention, we've got three cells there, and a booking desk, and an interrogation room. The rooms right off of the two-vehicle bays to the right are mostly for storage and evidence that has been collected that are bulk evidence, and a canine kennel area to house the canine when it's not out in the vehicle. And then on the second floor, as Bill mentioned, on the left-hand side, the southern portion that we're adding, that's all mechanical space, so we have a mechanical room, electrical room, and a storage room there, so unoccupied spaces. And the existing building is all administrative for the police department, all of their offices, interview rooms, and then locker rooms for the police officers. And on the right-hand side is over the detention area where we have meeting rooms and a wellness room for more mental health, so after possibly traumatic events, officers can take a little moment to sort of deal with whatever stresses that they've encountered on the job that day. And then the third floor, if they're, right now, it's just an existing mezzanine, we're not having that be occupied spaces, it's mainly being turned into a mechanical attic. Big mechanical units will be housed up there, and then the two smaller rooms to the other side of that is going to be data server rooms for the building itself, and also the town data center.
And then we get the site design, so we're going kind of fast, but we're more than happy to answer questions as, as we move towards the end of the project. So we've, I've given you a rendered site design, this is from the landscape plan, just so that you can get a perspective of the project. We're using the existing driveway off of King Street, that driveway is currently at ten percent grade, which is the maximum safe grade that we're willing to design or utilize for a public safety response facility. The design of this building had many, many iterations, which we explained to the zoning board of appeals, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. But primarily, the fire department is located on the southerly part of the building, because they have straight response coming out, and unlike a police response, eighty to ninety percent of police responses are made from a cruiser on the road, whereas the majority of fire and ambulance responses, they require their equipment, and they're more normally responding to from the station. So they need a straight because they have a truck, they need a straight aspect to get to the road, which is why the police are placed, because they have pickup trucks and cruisers, but they don't really have large apparatus, which is how the site design now mimics the inside, and that's what you'll find on this site design, is we try. On this site design is we try and complement what goes on inside the building on the exterior of the building. So this is the public part of the project where the public is allowed to park. We're gonna have raised islands here. To and and signs saying no authorized entry. To segregate this northerly part of the site and especially the rear of the building. Uh, so here we have the Sallyport which Paula described and what a Sallyport is, is it's a secure prisoner transfer area. So a prisoner will come in at a cruiser. The dispatcher will open the door. Uh, the cruiser will drive in, the dispatcher will close the door, the officer will check their weapon. And then they will safely uh remove the prisoner detainee. From the cruiser and bring them into the secure prisoner process scenario. And what this does is it prevents any ability of a detainee. Uh, to escape or to overpower an officer and and gain their weapon or or do anything untoward. Uh, so that that is a high security area as far as the site is concerned. These other two bays. Are for vehicle processing, storing, et cetera, et cetera. So if a vehicle. Is part of a crime scene or an accident and needs to be searched or whatever. They'll they'll undertake that inside there. Um. Then we have a driveway to the rear of the site and then this is where a lot of staff and a lot of the trailers and equipment. Uh, specialized equipment for the police station will be parked. Part of the problem, having done police stations now for an awful long time. Part of the problem that police departments have is when a police officer exits their private vehicle. In their civilian clothes and heads into the station, if they have to interact with the public. While still in their civilian clothes, that puts them at a disadvantage and it's not a desirable thing. Police need to be able to park their cars, their personal vehicles while off, uh, you know, coming on or off duty. In a semi-secure area so that they can get into the station and any interactions that they have then are controlled. Either in in the station or or done in the field um while they're in uniform. So that's part of the reason for the the parking to the rear. The other reason for the parking to the rear and it is essential. Uh, is that if the police are doing an operation. Uh, with another agency and they need to stage. They don't want to do that in a publicly vis- visible space. So that's what this back parking lot gives the police station, which I described earlier. You know, the police station design is unique and the the operations that a police department do are unique and they're not like. Other uh facilities in the town. So to the rear, we have picnic tables and a plaza here. This area right here is the principal entrance from the back, which is an upper level, which is the second level. And there's a side continuous sidewalk along the rear. There is no pedestrian connection. From the front or the lower level of the site to the rear of the site. We're cutting into this hillside and we've done multiple test holes on this hillside and we found the soils to be. Pretty really, I don't know how to describe them other than to say really, really, really bad. So what they are, they're a clay-based soil, what we call a silt loam. It's a gravelly silt loam. Uh, groundwater is relatively shallow, being three to four feet down. So in order to build this rear parking lot, we're. Digging into the hillside and then we're gonna stabilize that hillside with a rock stabilized slope. We're draining the top and the bottom of that slope to capture. Seasonally high groundwater and that will go into our drainage system and I'll get into the drainage system design in a little bit too. So minor landscaping and screening along the front of the site. Uh, screening in the rear to give us, this is the westerly exposure to give a little shade to that parking lot. And where we can, we're doing uh a little bit of screening with plants and trees. The islands will be cobbles. These islands to the front will be cobbles so that they can both be plowed, but they're not intended for pedestrian use. One of the other items that I did note is our accessible space is here. So uh uh handicap parking will be here. They'll have to come to the sidewalk here and then come all the way over. We would have normally put it directly in front of the front door. But the grades out here, we just can't make them compliant for an accessible space. And the building inspector has asked that we provide an accessible space to the rear so that uh. A mobility impaired employee can also work in in the station because it does have an elevator. Just the the quick layout again, here's the accessible space, the accessible space. Three parking, parallel parking spaces that will be marked fire department parking only. Um. And throughout the site, we just have a number of spaces. This is a dumpster pad, which uh. We'll get into a a brief description when we get to the reviewers' comments. Generator will be pad mounted here. It will have a dual wall uh diesel oil belly tank. That will supply because this is a public safety facility, we have to have a generator because if somebody is uh. Imprisoned in a cell and the power goes out, they, we have to be able to have life safety measures activated in the building. Uh, so it is not. An option. Uh, continuing where. Our curb cut will match the existing curb cut along King Street and one thing that you may not notice or know about is we have a depressed curb right here. For the simple reason that the adjacent lot has a right-of-way. Going up here. And we have a right-of-way, we have the benefits of that right-of-way. So we're not blocking that by creating a vertical curb. We're creating a mountable curb in this area, but we're still putting curbing. So that that right-of-way is not blocked. Uh, we have retaining walls here, which is what this funny little shape is. And we have retaining walls here so that we transition from the lower level to the upper level. Here's the grading plan, which you can see we're being pretty dramatic and cutting into the hillside. Uh, to allow the construction, but the 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 disturbance footprint of this project is really compact. Uh, which is why we're going with stopes stone stabilized slopes. Uh, what you'll see here is a below the parking lot, we're gonna have what's known as a detention structure. So the structure is going to be um. Empty volume that's going to be wrapped in high-density plastic and it will act as a detention basin. So that what it will do, it will collect water and it will slowly bleed it out to match the rate of pre-development because we are increasing the amount of impervious. Uh, and that drainage comes down in this area. Will have uh. A system of detention over here. And we're picking up other surface water uh runoff from the site. Ultimately, we'll have what's known as water quality treatment systems, which will be one or two. So that any discharge that leaves the site will be cleaner and meet the uh the standards. This right here is a floor drain holding tank. So because we're on sanitary septic system. Uh, and we're required wherever a vehicle pulls into a garage, the plumbing code requires that there are floor drains. To evacuate any water or drip or whatever that collects. And that has to go to a floor drain system. It can't be recharged. It can't go to the septic system. And your review engineer asks that it be double-walled. It is going to be a double-walled fiberglass tank with something called interstitial monitoring. Which is a sensor that's between the two tanks. So the inner tank will hold the the liquid from the floor. The outer tank is uh just a a security measure. And in between the two tanks is interstitial monitoring, which is a water sensor. So that if the inner tank leaks or even if the outer tank leaks, if it if it gets a puncture. Then an alarm is set off inside and we know to uh go investigate and see what's going on with that tank. So that tank will hold what's known as industrial non-hazardous waste. So. It simply is floor drain drainage. So it's oil that may drip off the vehicles. It's brake dust and it's just. Water dripping off either from snow or rain. Uh, and if they wash the vehicles inside, then it will collect that as well. Just very quickly, our utilities. Um, the overhead wires come in off the street. We're going to be doing what's known as a drop pole. In other words, a new utility pole will be created. And from that, the utilities will run underground. Up the driveway. And then across the back. So principally, the electric goes to a transformer, which is a pad-mounted transformer here. Goes to the electric room, which is over here. Uh, the generator also goes to the electric room and so that's how that's applied. In addition, the you have an overhead wire that exists today. Which is fiber optic serving the building that goes from here to here. And cable, electric, telephone, all the other support systems will come along the back of the building. In that way. Uh, we didn't supply your reviewer a zoning compliance table and the zoning district is not highway business. It's a Route Three commercial. Uh, but he is correct in assuming that we are in the watershed resource district. Uh, we're allowed forty percent impervious coverage. Uh, we're up to fifty-two point one percent, which means we will need a special, oops. Will need a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Now, I had mentioned before that uh we acknowledge that we will be going back to the zoning board of appeals. So on May fifth, we met with the zoning board of appeals for our second meeting. And that was for a simple uh dimensional variance from the. Southerly offset. For the construction of the fire station portion of the building. Because if we didn't get that variance, then the whole project would have to be completely redesigned if. If we didn't get an offset to the sideline offset. They did vote on May fifth to grant us that variance. So. The follow-on uh special permit and variances, if needed, will be filed with the zoning board of appeals. But as you can see, we meet um. All of the other applicable criteria than the sideline offset, which is eleven point nine nine versus twenty. And we asked them for a twelve and a half uh. Eleven and a half foot, just so that in case uh they didn't build it within the margin of error, that we would have a reasonable. Variance. Uh, I see that the review engineer is here, so uh if he would like to pick this up and run with the review comments, otherwise I'll just go through it. Uh, very quickly. Uh, in the project narrative, we state the new building will not use gas. However, the plans do show a gas line. Uh, yes, the gas line and meter are going to be removed from the plant. They have actually been removed from the plan set. And our revised plan set will depict that. Uh, the zoning table, he anticipates that we will exceed the forty percent, which the previous slideshow, that is correct. And we will be submitting a special permit to the ZBA for that. The drainage executive summary. So we have not submitted the drainage calculations or drainage system design to the conservation commission for a stormwater permit. And the simple reason is, well, we did complete the drainage design. I could not get the drainage executive summary and concluding documents. From my engineers in time to submit it to the planning board. But that has been completed and we will be submitting to the uh conservation commission in the near future. Which will address the drainage system design and compliance with. The town's stormwater standards and the state's stormwater standards. So uh we can certainly supply that to your review engineer as part of this process or. As part of the conservation commission review. Uh, the property is located in watershed resource district and your review engineer recommends. That the proposed floor drain. Holding tank be double-walled. As I said, it is a double-walled and does have an alarm on it. Uh. They recommend that the van-accessible parking spaces and access spaces be switched. So that the access spaces on the passenger side, we we take no. Objection to that and we will make that change. We have not made it. Uh, we note that the trash truck will not have room to turn around behind the building if the parking spaces are occupied. Um, Paula, do you want to pick that one up briefly and then I'll go to my answer?
Uh, yes, we've been informed by the facilities director for the town that at this building, they will not be having a dumpster. That the trash is collected on a daily basis. It's collected within the building and then removed. Daily and so there will be no dumpster associated with this building. So the pad that we're showing in the um site plan. Is for possible future use if that ever changes, but currently there's no foreseeable um. Use for a dumpster for this facility.
So uh, but I do, I do respond um that. If it does become a a recycling and dumpster pad. Uh, because this is a secure facility, the timing of the pickup can be coordinated with the trash company if that's an issue. Uh, and that timing can address when the parking lot is not fully used. So this is a very common thing because a lot of police and fire stations require. That the trash receiver uh show up before seven o'clock in a in the morning. Or after the last shift uh for the day so that. Occupancy of the upper lot would be minimized and that they'd be available. Finally, the aisle space is twenty-four feet, which would allow them uh agreeably, they would not like a twenty-four-foot multi-turn, but they could in fact make that. Uh, whoop. The hundred and twenty-three point five front-back some dimension appears correct, but is not connected to the proposed building. Uh, well, it. It's a very finicky thing. Uh, it does show appropriately. It's a dimension line uh that shows the offset to the building. It doesn't have an actual corner. But that that, of course, is an easy thing to change. Uh, retaining walls fall under definition of a structure. We believe that relief may be required to construct the retaining wells within the side yard setbacks. We don't disagree. We agree. Um, not all the applications to zoning board of appeals have been made and are pending. We think that this is an accessory structure, not a principal structure. Uh, so there is some level of uh. Reduced setback that may or may not apply, but that's up to the zoning board to determine. Uh, so we're happy to make that part of a uh. The the future impending uh. Filing with the ZBA, which we acknowledge we still have more to do. And then filing this, finally, the sewage disposal system. Uh, detailed needs to be revised. It has differing septic tank sizing and correct elevation. And specifies both a Presby soil absorption system and a conventional pipe and stone. And your reviewer is correct. This plan is a placeholder because we have. Made a determination that uh. The existing septic system that it. Exists on the site. So the leach field that's there now has passed the Title V inspection. And we did a calculation and we submitted it to the DEP. Uh, to explain differing loading calculations because if you use something that isn't defined in Title V. Both the local board of health and the DEP have to agree with the loading calculations. So those are in process. Um. And what those calculations show is that we have sufficient capacity. In the existing leach field to support the proposed facility. Because a police and fire station is nothing like. Uh, many of the uses that they provide in Title V. Yes, it has office space and that's pretty common, but we have cells and there's nothing in there. You can't use a prison cell because prisoners use a lot of water. And uh detainees do not, et cetera, et cetera. So we've submitted, because we've done so many septic systems for public safety facilities. We've submitted the uh revised numbers to DEP and to the board of health. To say that the existing leach field is sufficient, but we still have a problem. In that the existing soils on this site are. Really bad and and not really perkable in my opinion. And I am a. Certified soil evaluator. Um, so. Because we're adding to the building, that's considered new construction. New construction requires that you have a valid leach field and an expansion area. So the board of health is well aware of of this status and we're coordinating with the board of health and actually, in fact. With the conservation commission to undertake some soil probes on property across from King Street. To find an area that we can claim. Will be suitable for an expansion area for the facility. And if we do that, then we will be in compliance with Title V. Uh, and then we can proceed with. The final permitting with the board of health. So the board of health is very much aware, as is now the conservation commission. Um, with what the plan is to do to conduct testing across the street, which is adjacent to, but not within a wetland to support the site.
Bill, I just wanted to interject and say the site across the street is also owned by the town.
Right. Yep. And we would gain, so I've I've done this multiple times and we would gain access by doing something called directional drilling. Uh, which is drilling uh. Small, a three-inch hole that they control the actual direction of the drill. And they can dip down underneath the road and dip back up underneath the wetlands. And come out uh within five feet of where we want them to come out. Uh, and it is not an unusual thing to do and Mast DOT is not. Uh. Adverse to doing that. So that's a possibility that makes this all work together. Uh, again, just. The closeout of the picture of the proposed facility and uh. I hope we answered all your questions. I hope we answered all your questions, certainly can address anything in specifics. Uh we did give you a parking calculation to show that we exceed the requirement of the zoning bylaw. Uh for the number of parking spaces and both the chiefs have identified that the number of spaces that we show on the plan. Are reasonable to meet their requirements. Uh so with that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Um so how we typically will go through a a meeting like this is we'll start with our. At usually our architect is is somebody lined up to to look and talk uh at first and and we then go alphabetically. So um I didn't know that you were gonna actually have the peer review comment. Um a- and that was simply a question of whether the the peer reviewer was gonna be present or not. But that was very helpful and it it did give us a chance to get a much better sense than than just. You know, a cursory understanding of what you're pro- proposing to do, so Clark, would you like to start?
Yeah, I'd happy to, but first um it may make sense to just ask our peer reviewer if they were satisfied with the with the answers from the applicant team. Or has any other comments for the board to consider um uh based on their.
I was informed that the peer reviewer was not gonna actually be at the meeting, so I don't know what to say, but let's see.
He he is here, Amy.
Okay, good.
Um yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, Pat Brennan with PGB Engineering, uh your peer reviewer for this project. Um I think Mr. Murray did a great job going through my comments and his responses. Um I guess my my only question would be. Uh I I or my only um request would be that if they, when they do finalize the stormwater report, if. I could get a copy, but um there's probably a good chance that I'll be reviewing for that for concom as well, so it'd be good to. Good to take a look at it ahead of time, so I can get all the, we can try to get everything done at once.
Yep, that's absolutely.
Okay, that's great. Um thank you, so Clark, would you like to continue?
I did, I did have a couple of uh comments and 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 I will say that um the the. The the that most of the criteria that the site plan uh review has deals with like public safety and. Um circulation um uh uh. For for the planning board, so um I'm I'm just gonna go to what I think is the most important. And 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 um maybe get your responses uh immediately, so. Um some fi- fire stations down three A in Situate, they have uh they have a lighting that. Um if a if the if an ambulance is coming out, there's a stop sign there, um I see on your plan. Um the ambulance would have to wait with its lights and siren going until it sees that the traffic has stopped, you know, three A in this particular section. Sometimes the cars are going thirty five miles an hour, sometimes they're going fifty, it depends on uh what what time of day. So so my question was, did you um, did you consider signalization or some kind of auxiliary warning light? Um when um uh you're responding to an emergency or. Or emergency vehicles are coming out of the out of the drive aisle.
So the answer is yes, um good question though, so. I'm sorry?
We have talked about that with the owner and I think that they are currently looking into that and speaking with the state. About whether a light will be required or not.
Well, three A, I I mean, the the mast DOT can be more complicated than um than than necessary. Uh I I did some work for the Weymouth um. Uh fire headquarters and suggested a signal at that location and um and and I won't mention any names, but the. The con- the consensus was that the neighbors would would uh would go crazy if there was an extra light on that particular street. Um but in terms of uh the safety issue and uh being able to save seconds for for exiting the site. Uh that might be worth um considering, but I'll I'll leave it as a part of um the town's. Um thing, I I don't think the planning board per se necessarily would have any um greater perspective on. On on the issue uh than uh than the professionals in the police and fire department.
Um well, I'm happy to eh uh give you a little more information.
Yeah.
Uh mast DOT requires something known as a warrant, you have to have a traffic study that identifies. A warranted need to install a light in this location. And it's not very likely, given site distances and the location proximity of other lights. That they would allow a light for this facility here, which isn't to say they won't. Uh and as part of the curb cut process that we will be doing, we'll be making an application to them and requesting that. Um having been an EMT for many, many years, an ambulance, a fire truck and a police car. Are all required to stop at a stop sign before or a red light for that matter. Before proceeding through that state law, I mean, they have to stop and clear it, some do, some don't, but uh they are required to stop and make sure it's clear. With the sirens and the lights going, so. Uh at a minimum, you know, the the state law requires that they do approach the stop sign, stop, clear, clear their path and proceed.
Okay, um my next comment has to do with the site uh sign. And I've noted um from pulling in there um uh visiting offices, uh town offices. That the that the existing site sign uh might for some some vehicles uh cause. Uh some interference with the with the sight lines. And I wondered if um I I guess my suggestion is that that be looked at and optimized, I I wouldn't. I wouldn't make a recommendation, no, it should be, it should be twenty feet from the from the from the street or or whatever that is. There's a, there's a height issue, whether it's open below and and I didn't see the particular. Um um uh sign uh detailed there, uh but that that would be another comment. Um the the three parking spaces um along the the exit and entrance aisle. Um it seemed like it it that they, you you explained that they're gonna be for the fire department only and labeled. Um I I I wonder if it makes sense to to not stripe them and and just let the fire department use them if they have their vehicles outside at. At some point uh in between calls. Um while I I wouldn't wanna be prescriptive, tell you what to do with your parking spots, but um. Um it it seemed like that's the activity area and you would wanna limit or eliminate um any um extra parking. Um in in that particular area, given that people might be in a rush going in and and a rush going out. Um my my next comment has to do with lighting and I I did see the photometric plan and it seems like there's there's plenty of lighting there. But I wonder if there's uh a uh maybe a different level of lighting for um. Uh nighttime like at the entrance as opposed to um nighttime during during like sort of. Re- regular hours and um we usually for especially for site plan and. Special permits require night sky technologies, lights so that the um we I don't think we would want to have any lighting. Um shining on the three A, uh but we certainly would expect and I think it's a public safety feature to have. Extra lighting, not not be stingy on the on the sight lighting, uh I don't know if you have a comment on that, I um.
Uh our, the lighting that we've specified does have shielding, um so we are trying to prevent light from. Encroaching beyond the property lines and the photometric, I think, kind of shows that as well, but. As part of the design intent, we are planning on shielding the fixtures or having sh- fixtures with that shielding ability.
Yeah, okay, and then um the the last thing is just more or less a comment, it seemed like you're eliminating um natural gas. From the from the project, how will you heat it?
It's an all electric building.
All electric and is it possible to uh make the new, at least the new construction or have the um. The existing roofs be solar ready?
They're solar ready as far as structural.
Yeah, good.
Um but we aren't running any uh conduits or anything like that, but we, it has been designed to handle the weight of. Photovoltaic panels.
Connecting the roof to the electric closets and and no plan for battery um system, cuz you already have a generator.
Right, but we we are leaving space in the electric room for um equipment for a PV system, should it get installed in a future date.
Oh, good, all right, those are my only comments, thank you, this looks like a great project.
All right, so then, uh let's see, uh Kevin Heine, I'll I'll go left, so Kevin.
Hi, um thank you for um comprehensive um plans and discussion of them, uh I'll just pick up on a few points that Clark. Um mentioned, um I I would caution against over lighting this facility. Um this facility is already in an area that projects a lot of um light trespass and pollution to the skies and. You know, it's visible in other areas of the town because this the trespass that already exists on this hill. Um especially noticeable on foggy or low cloud ceiling days, um will only be. Come a worse situation if light is allowed to trespass. Uh beyond the property lines or even if it stays within the property lines, if it's over illuminated. Um and it reflects off those surfaces, especially after um types of precipitation um. Uh be it white and it really reflects up to the sky or it be dark and the pavement just gets shinier um after rainstorms. Light trespass is already a problem in this area, light loss to the sky is already an issue and I would do do not wanna see it added. Over illuminating a a public facility that's gonna be occupied pretty much twenty four seven by. Entities that know how to secure a facility, so let's not get carried away with illumination here and let's just be real with that. Um with regard to um the grade, correct me if I'm wrong, I think. I heard that the grade in and out of the fire um area is gonna be on the order of eleven percent. Can I just get a quick clarification on that?
Yeah, sure, no, the drive, the existing driveway, uh let me see if I can get to the grading plan here. There we go, the existing driveway. Right there, all the way up to here is ten percent, that's what it is today. But we have a level area where they can park the apparatus. Uh in front of the bays, so it's 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 level here where we reach the end of this little island and going down, that's all ten percent uniformly. From this point down, this is a level area so they can park the trucks uh not on a steep slope.
So uh I'm just concerned with regard to even if it's not um and thank you for the correction, it's even not uh. Above ten percent, even in the order of ten percent or approaching it, I think those are substantial grades and those are beyond anything I've ever seen. Um a a fire um vehicle, even if it's a smaller one that would be positioned here, not a full on ladder type truck. Would be expected to navigate um after at the be at the beginning of and and after every call all year round. Um whenever you see any other um, correct me if I'm wrong, I just don't don't know of many. Fire or auxiliary fire stations that have braids uh. In in the near proximity to their um to their garages, so. Uh especially I I also wanna point out, this will be a, for the most part, a north or north easterly facing. Um grade with slope and you know during the the four months out of the year when we do have winter. That could be a real issue um with um freeze thaw cycles not being complete. And compaction with heavy materials and just traffic going in and out of there to provide a uh. Slipper surface than perhaps could be anticipated and I'd hate to be that, see that response call. Um have issues just getting out of the gate um because of icing or um slippery conditions. In the area of that, one one question I have is, are are we talking about a uniform base grade across this entire? Building or has there been consideration of a lower grade on that? I'll I'll call it the the southeastern end of the building in the area where we're talking about these fire trucks. To provide less of a grade, essentially you would provide a lower um base elevation over there. Than other parts of the building perhaps, has that been considered?
Paula, you or me?
You can probably talk about the grades more, but I can give you a quick summary that we did do a lot of site studies on this because. The building committee in particular was hesitant about um. The grades and putting things behind the building, having the parking behind the building, we looked at putting the apparatus. Having them drive around and putting them at the back, we looked at trying to lower the um. Finish floor of the apparatus bay, but then that starts causing problems with the grades for the site that is adjacent to us on the south side, so. Changing the floor where the apparatus was going to be, changing that elevation proved in the various studies that we did. To be more of a challenge and cause other problems um that would kind of snowball if we made those changes, so it was just. A better decision to have it on the same grade as the existing building and ten percent is. Steeper than I think most fire departments would probably like, but it is doable and we've worked on buildings before that have. Had sites that have had to have slopes like similar to this to get in and out of the apparatus, but it should be workable.
Yeah, so I have uh I've designed multiple sites at ten percent, which is the maximum that I'd recommend. There is, there's no way other than to lower the apparatus grade, which then, as Paula said. Uh we did look at it and we'd have to lower it really substantially and then it would in relation to the existing building. Alright, let me rephrase that, we have to lower the apparatus bay really substantially to reduce the approach grade. But as you can see, it's connected to the front door of the existing building, so. That then would steepen up the connection to the front of the existing building and it just multiplies from there. Uh and and I would suggest to you that you go look at Elm Street, if you look at the fire apparatus uh. Bay right now at Elm Street, that's pretty darn steep, that's gotta be close to ten percent. So it's not something that they're not used to, I did this in Franklin. Uh and we just finished a uh fire station up in Ashby at nine and a half percent. So it's not something that can't be done and yes, will it require DPW to visit here a little more often? Maybe apply some extra salt, I think probably yes, but we've, you know, the town bought this building and we've accommodated it as best we can. Um we can't change that driveway and I wouldn't let it get any steeper than where it is uh so.
Alright, so it sounds like you've you've considered alternatives and it's duly noted, this is a difficult and imperfect site. But this is the problem that we're left with, so I would just like to see accommodations and consideration and recognition of potential problems. And ways they could be mitigated and managed so that the town isn't left with an issue down the road because, well. We did what we needed to do to fit it in here and get the slope we needed over there and now we're left with this issue. Even though it's right at the limit of a grade and it's the same grade we had in an existing facility, but that was south facing. Now we're facing the northeast and now it doesn't quite melt as much as we thought, what are we gonna do? DPW doing more salt and sand application over there within a um area that's subject to. Special environmental concerns due to the wetlands in the area needs to be considered as well. So everything's gonna have a trade off here and positioning a building and landing it in the way that it's oriented now may fit. Everything eight or nine months of the year, I'm just wondering about those other considerations and I wanna make sure everyone's on the same page with that. So duly noted, this is a difficult site, um but I would like to see recognition of those potential concerns. Um I would like to see acknowledgement of that and potential. Um ways they were either mitigated in the design or ways they can be handled post design, so it doesn't create an issue for the town and it's like, oh. You know what, why didn't we consider that then or at least know about it, so that we could get the right minds and ideas around this. Um I'd just like to bring up the point too about traffic control devices and I'd like to hear from the chief himself, I know he's on this call. As to whether he thinks traffic control devices and the placement of them outside on route three A. Could produce reduced response times for the calls that would be. Um serviced out of this location versus just keeping a stop sign. Anecdotally, I can tell you whether you're trying to turn left coming down from Avalon Hill. Or you're right, tried, ready to turn left onto three A coming out of any of the um. Uh commercial establishments um on the northeast side of route three A is difficult. And I can't imagine calls that are gonna be serviced out of this new step station to.
to all be right-hand turns coming out of that driveway. There's going to be left-hand turns to go north on three A, and that's crossing, uh, what is essentially a, a undivided highway. And I think traffic control devices from a safety perspective could be beneficial and also from a response time. And I'd like to hear the, uh, what I see is on the call here, if we could have an opportunity for him to weigh in on that, I think that could be helpful.
So Madam Chair, can I just interject briefly? Uh, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, yes, go ahead, please.
I just want the planning board to be aware that, uh, anything that happens on King Street, regardless of whether the planning board wants it or not, is subject to review and approval by Mass DOT. It's not, the town has no say. We can recommend, we can require, we can request. But it is Mass DOT and their rules regarding signage, warning, et cetera, et cetera, as to what's allowed on King Street. So I, I agree absolutely with both members that say that some sort of in, enhanced, uh, advisory is a good idea, uh, but it's Mass DOT's jurisdiction, regardless of what the planning board or any other entity in town wants to say, it's entirely up to their review and authority.
All right, um, thank you. Is the police chief here still? Okay, so there we go. Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, these are, these are great, great questions that are being raised. Um, I just, for a little bit of background, we did meet with Mastar. We also met with, um, uh, our state senator as well as our representative about a month and a half ago. We met at Sittit, um, police station and fire station on three A. We learned about the, uh, emergency traffic lights that they have there. This, in Mastar was there as well, uh, they're in support of helping us, um, put emergency signals on this section of King Street. And cruisers and some of the fire apparatus are, um, equipped with something that's called an opticom. You've probably seen them as you're driving around, but, um, that there's a, the, there's a signal that's submitted from the emergency vehicle that, that connects with that traffic light, you know, turn those lights red. Um, we'll, we'll get a green light and the lights will go red for, uh, for us traffic to help us get out of, um, driveways. Uh, you know, we, we have, uh, this is definitely, you know, top of mind. Uh, but, but people are generally pretty, pretty good. I know traffic can get heavy up there, but we're definitely looking to mitigate this. And, uh, again, the, the state is on board, uh, with helping us, uh, put, put emergency signals in this area. We've, we've had at least two meetings with them and, uh, they, they know about this issue.
All right. So, uh, thank you, Kevin. Are you okay with that, at least to think about it? I know this is not going to be the last time we see this project. We're gonna put it back up on the agenda. So between now and then, perhaps there can be some conversations, um, about further deliberation regarding the, uh, exit entry issue particularly.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any other points. I would like to hear from, uh, Chief, um, Doc Ray with regard to response times. Um, are those being met across the, um, town as things currently stand? And or could, um, traffic control devices possibly help reduce those if they were to be installed at this facility?
Traffic control, uh, measures would definitely help us exit out on a King Street in a safely manner to, uh, improve our response times. Uh, but the first part of your question, are response times being met by the national standards? Uh, no, right now because we respond out of the one station. Uh, adding the second station on three A will greatly help and improve our response times to Beechwood section of town, Northern Coas and section of town. And then especially along the entire three A corridor where we've seen a, a large uptick in our responses, uh, on the three A corridor.
Thank you.
Sorry, um, I'm gonna be very brief. I appreciate the, um, applicant's very well thought-out presentation. I just had one question, your responses to the, um, PGB engineering, uh, third-party paper. Is that something I, I apologize, that we have in print and that we can get a hold of Cassandra? Um, I tried to take some notes, but I can't write that fast. Um, just curious if that's something the planning board can have access to, just so we have it for future reference. Um, I really appreciate that each item was, was addressed. Um, but, and my questions and concerns really have been answered and, uh, given me some, uh, thought for what we see from this project in the future. Um, I did obviously have some questions about the lighting and, um, the traffic signals because as we have all, it's just been addressed, so I'm not going to go over it again. Um, and I look forward to seeing, uh, future work on this project. Thank you.
If you answer your question, Deirdre, I do not have a copy of that, but Mr. Murray, if you could send that to me, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Then, uh, let's go on to, uh, Burgeet Schmidt for comment.
Um, the same for me. Um, all of the important questions have been answered. And, um, I just have a, like a, so to say, minor one. Um, there is not much room, um, with the parking in the front and in the back. So, um, have we thought about like where to put snow? If, if we do hit, you know, um, uh, a bigger snowstorm is, um, will we just have to require the police officers not to come with the cars so that we can use that as the parking, uh, as the, well, the parking for the snow?
Uh, so, Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, you have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, we have, we delineate snow storage spaces on, on the site plan. Uh, there's plenty of room, uh, leftover room on the, the periphery of the upper. Uh, let's see if I can get to it, the upper parking lot. So we have snow storage spaces available here on the side at the toe of the slope here. They can plow onto our patio. Uh, this coming down, they're probably going to plow and store snow in this general area. Though we do have a wood guard rail along this edge so that nobody, there's nothing there now, uh, some boulders. Uh, something I did forget to mention is along this row here in the parking will have electric charging stations, uh, because that's the current code. Uh, but snow storage is more readily available on the upper level than it is the lower level. Uh, they can store snow in this area on the end of the parking lot and off to the edges here. This is a rather steep slope, so it's not likely that they're going to be able to store snow. Uh, there we go, in that area.
Yeah, and it needs to be clear for the fire trucks.
Right. Yep. And DPW apparently will be doing that. I've been getting, uh, a text from the owner's project manager saying that, uh, the project has a budget for, a budget and a line on it for a traffic study to address, uh, the signalization on Route three A there. So that's already in the queue and will be working on, uh, on the owner's project manager part.
Okay, great. Um, uh, uh, Burgeet, is that?
Yeah, I don't have any further questions. No, all of the rest was addressed. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a few, and I'm, I'm just gonna run through them because I'm sure either there's not the answer yet or that we'll have to think about it. So, um, I understand that the roof of the building is going to be capable of carrying the weight of potential solar applications. And I would just say now at this point, why aren't we gonna do that as we, we renovate the building? So that is a checkmark of something I'd like to see as good justification for not doing it because, um, there, and there, and there's citing issues and all sorts of things. But I want, I don't want it to fall off the list of issues because play, people, uh, in Massachusetts is a very expensive area of the country for, in terms of power supply. And, um, so if we want to mitigate some aspects of the cost of the project, uh, electrical support might, would be, um, useful. Uh, if you, what, when considering landscaping, what, we try to recommend that the individuals with the application to look at native plants that would fit within the context of the area that it would be, um, vegetated. Uh, and we have a number of people in town that, and I'm sure that, uh, you will also know plenty of people to think of that as really as a priority that we set is to use landscaping materials that are native. Um, in terms of the septic, I was wondering about that because I think that, I wonder what the age of the building is. And, um, and I'm sort of curious, why would you, uh, continue to rely on a septic system? Um, rather than basically trying to deal with the problem once and for all as it relates to sewer, um, operations? So having something besides the septic, we're in twenty twenty-five and there are lots of reasons not to have a septic. So that's just one I'd like to see what, what, why. It might be money, might be space, but it's something we should think about. Um, uh, in terms of exterior material of the building, what's the exterior material plan? And what is its lifespan? Do we know?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were listing things and I was gonna respond after. Well, I can respond to a few of your points. The PV is not included in this scope of the building right now because of budgetary reasons as it is. Uh, there is a certain amount of money that the building committee had kind of in mind because we're having to go to a special town meeting in November to request the funding for this. And so there is a kind of cost that they had in mind that we were trying to meet with the design of this building. So PVs were not included as part of this scope, um, to try to stay within those budgetary, uh, requirements that they had. As far as the landscaping, we are planning on using native plants. So that has been specified as part of the project. And the septic system, that is a big story. But we have been studying that for months. And connecting to town sewer has its own, um, set of components because the point of connection is way away from our site. And I guess the load that it would put on the, um, existing treatment facility, there's some question as to whether it could handle this load as well. And septic, we looked at replacing it. We looked at putting a new one in. And as Bill said, we finally came around to, the best option is to reuse the existing and having it try to meet new code by having our, um, reserve leach field has been kind of the best option. But many, many, um, options were looked at for how to deal with the sewer system. And as far as the exterior materials, uh, what you can see in this rendering is the brick on the existing building is staying, and so we've kind of used that as a taking off point and have extended that onto the two additions on either sides, down at the lower portion of the building where it would be the most durable. And just because the amount of wear and traffic that's happening on the site. Up above that, we have fiber cement panels that are going to be in a board and batten, uh, installation just so it kind of ties into kind of a cohesive coastal town feel to it and to soften the building a little bit so it's not completely masonry. And then at the entrance to the building, we're putting in a resinous plastic plank panel is what we're proposing now. These materials can all vary slightly once the job goes out to bid because it is a public bid project. So the contractor will use what we're supplying as the basis of design for his pricing. And we may get substitutes for this, but the intent is fiber cement at the upper portions of the building, a resinous plastic panel at the main entrance there, and then brick to tie into the existing brick.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. Um, and then the last thing is, is, is part of our documentation, can we get a copy of the stormwater report? Is it completed or it's in process?
No, it is, it is completed. Uh, matter of fact, it was completed on Monday of this week. So yes, a copy will go to you, the planning board, and to your review engineer. Uh, and of course, as I said, we're going to be filing with the conservation commission. Who issues the stormwater permit will be giving them the same information.
Okay, um, I, I had one last comment actually, which is, so we've been discussing the, um, uh, driveway and commenting on the slope. Is there any way to utilize materials that have rougher features? Or in some way can allow moisture to, um, uh, be whipped away, but also be quite stable and have, but have a rough surface on it so that the slope is not gonna just immediately slick over and, you know, very minimal types of snow circumstances? Is there anything that you can do with the material?
Yeah, there's something that Mass DOT calls an open graded friction course. So it's a slightly coarser, um, surface, and you'll see it on steeply sloping Mass DOT roads. We're not worried about water wicking away, um, on a ten percent slope. It's gonna go away. It will flow downhill at, at a fairly fast rate of speed, so this will drain relatively quickly. And we already are, uh, gonna be specifying an open graded friction course on this. The other thing I didn't mention is kind of a technical detail. But the driveway from the fire apparatus to the road will be extra heavy-duty pavement. I don't know if you've noticed on older fire stations, but you'll see ruts in the driveway where the fire trucks have been. Uh, it, it's, it's something that annoys me to no end. Uh, so the pavement where the fire apparatus will be will be extra heavy-duty so that ruts won't form for good twenty-five, thirty years. I mean, asphalt is what we call a flexible pavement. So if you drive on it enough, no matter what you do, no matter how much the time, it will, after an extended period of time, maybe start to show some ruts. But not, uh, not during the initial thirty-year period, I think, um, of use of the fire station.
All right, great. So thank you very much. Um, is, are there any final comments where we're at as far as it goes with the members of the planning board? And do we anticipate that we will need another meeting to go over items that, uh, we all have individually pointed out? Clark, would you answer that question, please?
Sure, uh, but Kevin raises hand.
Oh, I see. I didn't, I can't see it with the picture. Okay, Kevin?
Um, yeah, I, I do, um, believe in a follow-up, um, meeting, um, would be beneficial. Uh, perhaps, um, as comprehensive as this was, um, follow-up with regard to comments that were already, um, provided response to, we could get those from our, um, engineer, um, whether the responses to those were complete and, uh, sufficient. And then follow-up to the questions raised by the board. I, I will reiterate, um, a, a concern that I do have too when I heard that this is going to go with a hundred percent electric utility, including the heating. While this is on a corridor that is serviced by, um, natural gas line, um, in light of, um, the, the state's goals, um, for, uh, efficient, um, uh, building, uh, construction, um, currently and getting, um, stronger in the future. Uh, consideration should be made with regard to that. And then I think from a cost benefit standpoint, um, while it might be less expensive on a initial cost, a construction cost, a build cost to go with electric, um, the carrying cost for electric in this state is either the highest in the nation or probably the second highest in the nation for both residential and commercial users. Um, when you look at simply the rate for electric utility, um, usage on a kilowatt basis, it is top or second, uh, in the nation. And while it may be palatable from a positioning for the next town election, um, on a cost benefit analysis, when you just go out a few years, you know, this is something that's going to be on the back of the town indefinitely until an alternative is forced upon the town or the town realizes that the carrying cost for heating a building of this size using a hundred percent electricity is gonna be enormous. And, um, you know, I'm not sure if it's even with, it's perhaps may not be within the purview of this board, but I just want to reiterate my concern with regard to that point that you raised, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, um, let's see, um, Burgeet, do you have? Forget if you have any more comments you want to make?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Deidra?
No, thank you. I look forward to the next meeting where we can make sure we see everything that's been, all the changes are on the existing plans. Thank you though very much.
Okay, so we have our peer review. And the peer review can begin communication with the architects and the designers in terms of the consequences of this conversation. And I would like to see them as they go through their list, some things are going to drop off and maybe other things are going to start to emerge. And it would be very helpful from the planning board perspective if we could get these lists in alignment so we know what's been covered and who has covered it. So that would be using a combination of the peer review and the architect and the building designer and landscape architect. And then with that, then we would like to continue this meeting and I'd first like to ask Cassandra what it looks like in terms of date into the future that we might have access to?
Sure. So your next two meetings are May 28th and June 11th. You have one A and R application on the May 28th agenda already. And for the applicant representatives' knowledge, most materials are due eight days prior to the meeting. So that would just need to be factored into whatever date you're continuing to.
Okay, so say the June date again, I'm sorry.
June 11th.
Okay, so in terms of the applicants, is there a better? I know that you want to get this project going and we sure want it to go. But there, I'm sure there's other issues besides us that will have to continue into the future. So would you rather be on May 28th or June 11th?
Cassandra, you said how early, how soon do we have to have our package turned in prior to the next meeting?
It's eight days prior.
So it'd be next Tuesday.
That's pretty tight.
Well, I don't know that there's much outstanding. We, we have answered the, the review engineers' questions other than the storm drainage, which we'll supply to them. If I were the review engineer and I gave him a drainage design like this drainage design and asked him to have it ready for the 28th, I don't think that would be fair.
All right. So then why don't we say June 11th? That, that's and, and in these cases, we have been moving projects that have site plan review requirements forward pretty regularly. It's not like, you know, drop dead day is actually going to get in our way. So what would you, are you amenable, both of you to that?
That's Chief Quigley's call, isn't it?
Whatever, whatever part of things really, I, I don't, I don't have a
Well, going an extra, going an extra two weeks isn't going to mess anything up, is it? When you're planning?
Yeah, I think June 11th should be fine. We can, we can keep that date for sure.
All right.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing site plan review to June 11th.
All right, 1:35 Chief Justice Highway, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's do roll call vote, starting with Mr. Clark.
Clark Brewer, yes, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye, yes.
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
And Vuitton, aye.
All right, so with that, thank you very much. This was really, it's very exciting actually. Because right now we feel in two places at once and not, not whole in either one of them. All right, so let's move on. What we have now is just a few set of minutes that we need to approve. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
No, can I comment? I took a look at these minutes and I think we've got some errant information on them.
Oh, all right.
So send your comments to Cassandra?
Well, I, 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 right off the bat, I think we have a, a set of comments on dates where members weren't present saying they were there. And yet you look at the roll call for the days that they were saying they were there and we only had four people on roll call. The math doesn't work, the dates don't work. I think the templates got transposed with the information on them and they're, they're, they both need to be corrected.
Okay, could you notate that in an email? And I mean, I can certainly review them. That's not a problem. But if there's something in particular that you're referencing.
Well, for instance, Deidra wasn't at one of these two meetings. And then when you look at the roll call vote, she, she was there. So we checked in at the beginning of the meeting and then you see a roll call vote and she is there with votes for a meeting where she wasn't.
Yeah, it, because I was, Amy didn't see me till the meeting had already started, Kevin.
Yeah, she had arrived later.
About 20 minutes late, but I was on the meeting. So I'm not sure. I was, I was listed absent because I was not at the roll call when we started the meeting at 6:30. I didn't get here till a little later.
Then I, I think to avoid future confusion or concern with regard to the notes not reflecting what accurately was recorded, that needs to be pointed out that
They arrived late or something like that.
In a detail, yeah. Or if a member, if a member couldn't vote because they recused themselves from the topic at hand because they weren't at another meeting, that needs to be pointed out as well. Otherwise, it could be a basis for you know, appeal of any decisions that we made unless we, unless we mark it down now on these minutes, the nuances like this. We could be caught flat footed if we have to provide a reasoning for why something looks a little out of, out of kilter.
You're totally right. I typically try to, if a member arrives later into the meeting, I try to indicate it at the point in which they arrive. But I may have missed it in this set of minutes. So I can go back and review that.
No fault to your own. I just remember it being a little I, I couldn't even recall and yet I was kind of looking at these both sets and I wasn't sure what was off, but I could see something. Perhaps if it wasn't off, it just needed to be clarified and I, I wasn't able to do that based on my recollection. So I don't have any additional input. I wanted to say it wasn't clear enough to me based on my recollection of these last two meetings. So if that further information could augment them, I think we'd be well served before we vote on them and record them as complete.
Okay, so do you want to push off the vote until the next meeting?
I also have an additional point to make to, to the notes. So that, the same thing, I noticed the same thing that Kevin was pointing out, but I, I also would, would like to have it probably made a little bit clearer of why we denied it, or at least why I denied it. And that was going by the current bylaw, which says that the volume of ledge removal has to match the project that you actually want to build. So it was referenced in terms of, you know, kind of like mitigating it with another ledge that, you know, and kind of we could keep and, and, or make, you know, kind of visible and have that on a one to one match. This is not the, the, the major point in, in, in this new bylaw is that they want to build something that can be calculated in terms of volume. You see the ledge that can be calculated in terms of volume. And it's that ratio that we are looking at. And that was the ratio that we were looking at. It was in the first application, a ratio of one to four and not one to one. And in the revised application, it was a ratio of one to three. And obviously still not matching what the bylaw requires. So this is, this is kind of like, I know it's all new, right? But I think we, we should be very clear in, in, in our minutes with that as well.
So just for my clarification purposes from when I go back in and edit these, are you saying that there were I guess maybe you'd like the comments that you made rephrased? Or, or not rephrased, but recorded differently?
Yes. So just to be very, yeah, I, I probably just clarification there, you know, and kind of the comment that, that I made, what I pointed out was exactly pointing to our bylaw where we talk about this volume to volume constraint. And, and it, it had nothing to do with, you know, kind of, we have this additional thing where we say like, okay, you can take this rock if you, you know, and kind of, if you make available in rock in another place. And so that is not what, what we are talking about here. We are talking about what the bylaws say, like you can take out volume wise, what you need for your project. In the case of the pickleball field, that was something like, I can't remember it off the top of my head, but I have it written down.
It's all right. I mean, we have Zoom meetings. Cassandra can just go to whatever comment you made and make sure that it's been quoted exactly and put it in quotes. Whatever comment you had.
Correct.
If you, if you think that it's been recorded in the meeting minutes or reflected insufficiently, Cassandra can just go through and, and put every single word, every single comment, part of the comment that you made in the meeting minutes as in quotes. So it should be 100% accurate. But in terms of other related issues or quoting from the bylaw, something that you did not say at a part of the hearing, that, that, that probably wouldn't, that probably wouldn't make sense.
Correct.
I did say it and that's why I'm, you know, I was pretty clear in that meeting.
Right, then it would
If it's new and we are trying to, you know, and kind of, you know, and kind of roll it out now. And that was exactly the, the, the main point, you know, kind of in, in denying it, in denying it twice, actually.
No, understood. I, I tried to summarize as best I can, so that the minutes aren't 25 pages long, but I can go back in and elaborate a bit more.
Do you need additional notes from Birgit with regard to what she recalls, having said, to kind of key in on a particular note? Or do you have enough info, Cassandra, based on just what you heard here?
No, I can just go back into the recording and rewatch the sections where Birgit was speaking and just record it.
Thank you very much. This is, it's thankless doing what you're, you're doing by keying up that recording and going through the details and trying to summarize these disparate comments that we all surface with, repeat of comments, ramblings. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Speaking of thankless, just one thing I wanted to mention on our first A and R hearing at 25 James. I double checked the application. And it does say residence B on the application, though I also double checked the zoning map, a full size updated zoning map, and it's definitely residence A at that location. So that the, just so you know, the lot will be conforming and not made more not made less conforming.
So Clark, should we go ahead and correct that?
I don't think so. I don't think it matters at all. I just wanted to make the point that sometimes the application materials have errors built into them. Like in this case, it said residence B right on their application and we weren't looking at it. And it actually didn't show up on the plan that, that I didn't see it anywhere on the plan that Merrill put together.
So maybe the condition is that whoever identified that little square used the words of residence B as a determination of it.
Right? It, it, residence B was a part of the application. It was identified as residence B on the application. Done by the homeowners and not the engineer. So that's where the error came from. And I didn't have time to check it. So I was just trying to make a point that the lot conforms to the minimum lot size. And I didn't have time on the fly to, to double check it, but I did while I was listening carefully to the other hearing. Check it.
All right. Well, then we'll, we'll note it in the, in our documentation, Cassandra.
No, I don't think it matters. It's just a mistake. It's not going to change. Voting a unanimous vote on endorsing the A and R.
But we could add that note though, Clark, and I think there would be value.
I don't think it matters.
All right.
Okay.
But what matters to me is I wasn't wrong. I'm just kidding. I don't care. I can be wrong.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right. So I believe that we are finished with this meeting of tonight.
Yeah, we were just trying to talk about the possibility of hybrid meetings. And I, I, I think, you know, COVID has been gone long enough. I think that hybrid and Zoom have a lot of advantages, both for the applicants and, and for the board. Although, you know, I must admit, I, I met Birgit for the first time out in front of town meeting for 15 seconds. And, and I, I think that our board would benefit from some live FaceTime and being able to share institutional knowledge and and have a more effective board. And I, I don't think it has to happen at every meeting. In fact, I probably would suggest that maybe it's at, at least, at least, oh, at least every six months, we have a, a live or a hybrid meeting. Maybe a quarter, maybe it's every three months. Some, maybe we should just try to have a, a hybrid meeting and then decide when we could do the next one. And I don't think it has to be completely decided right now, but I'd like to hear what everyone thinks of the possibility.
I think we have all asked Cassandra at one point or another about, you know, kind of switching from pure Zoom to, as you suggest, a hybrid. I'm, I'm totally in favor for it, of it. And but I think Cassandra, if I remember right, right, this is, there's this technical problems that we are facing there.
There's certainly more logistics that go into holding a hybrid meeting. Julia and I have tried to flush some of them out. The zoning board did just meet hybridly for the first time last month. They had a fairly quick meeting and it didn't go awry, which is good. So, but it's, it's all very new. And I think that, and I believe I've mentioned this before, that, you know, it's certainly something that we could try. We just have to plan in advance so that way we are ensuring that any hearings that are continued are continued to a date and time certain. And that a room is available as well as any public hearing notices that we have, because those are going to include the locations.
Yeah, I think that one of the issues that we want to also add into the mix in terms of what is a, a, an impediment potentially, but one which we could definitely resolve. And that is when we have a peer review, when we have people we know are going to talk before us. And, and they're sufficiently, they're going to be sufficiently engaged in the meeting from the standpoint of, of a portion of the time that we talk. It might be that we would lose people because we're not making the situation convenient. So we would want to plan it very carefully, but we should try it. I mean, I think there's no, no harm in doing that. We really, and it's a very slow time for us. Right? We haven't seen much of anything that's come in, in the way of really major projects. We saw a lot just before Christmas and at the start of the year, but then everything is at a lull and I'm keeping track of the real estate sales in town. And for the first, I saw, I've seen one and then I finally saw two. And there's more than 30 on the market. So things are, you know, not moving and that means people might not be changing things.
Well, hybrid still means that we the option for not meeting together for, you know, for example, the, the applicant tonight. The engineer was from Littleton and the architect was from Charlestown and, you know, to come down to Cohasset and like, you know, go sufficiently ahead You know, to come down to Cohasset and like, you know, go sufficiently ahead of time that you're not late from the start of the meeting and all that. All that stuff. I mean, it 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 might be that it's just our board meeting or or maybe one of our board members. Is out of town or something like that. I I mean, I think, I think we should, we should schedule. A a meeting in the in the future to to, as a goal for a hybrid meeting. And and then see how it goes and see, you know, what, you know, when we would want to do it next and. So I would, I would depend on Cassandra to to look into what the logistics were for this ZBA meeting. And and maybe we could talk about it a little bit more at our next meeting.
I think that's a good plan. One question that I would have to a point that you just brought up, Clark, is. It, whereas, you know, with tonight's application, most of the applicant's representatives were not local. Would it be? I guess better to plan for a meeting where I'm looking at the applications ahead of time and I see that like, you know, the engineer is local. The architect is local. That way, you actually have people that, I mean, there's no guarantee that they'll show up in person, but they have a better chance of showing up in person. Versus a meeting where it's probably just going to be you guys sitting in a room.
Right, yeah, whatever, whatever makes sense to you. I I think it it that as a first one in in. Oh, how long's it been? Half a decade? Just, you know, it's it's been a while. I mean, and, you know, I I kind of gotten used to the Brady Bunch. Approach to these meetings and, but but I think that having all the information in front of us. I know with live meetings in the past, one person makes sure that they have a full set of plans, the other person has the the zoning. By law, somebody else might have a a regulation that that we all kind of collaborate on. The the detailed review of the information so that, so that we as a board don't miss anything. It's not, no, we're not. One person trying to cover everything.
Okay, so we will. We'll continue this conversation and and try to work up a set of scenarios, not many, but enough to make it worthwhile. To see what would make sense in terms of how many things going on. And because if we had a lot of things going on, it would probably be. Stressful to be all sitting there without any, you know, a way to either speed things up. Or just not then at 11 o'clock at night like we used to, Clark, remember, and go home at 11 o'clock at night after one of the meetings. But we'll present some options and also I I have people in there in my world that. Do this all the time. They've done every possible form you can imagine, so. Maybe by June 11th, we'll have something to suggest.
Yeah, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. I mean, I would, I would again. Have Cassandra see how it went with the ZBA and what the logistics were and we'll we'll talk about it at our next meeting.
Yeah, I can throw together like a summary document of what the technical details of running the meeting would look like. That way, at least you guys are knowledgeable on it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? Uh, roll call vote?
Clark Brewer, yes, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, yes, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
There we go. Good luck on Saturday.
Bye, Cassandra. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night.
Thank you.